Good afternoon and welcome. This is Harriet Spake from Governance Services. Under Agenda Item Number One, councillor Hutchison was nominated as Chair for the start of the meeting. Can I ask if all members are agreeable? Okay, thank you. Councillor Hutchison is now formally elected as Chair. Over to you, Chair.
Thanks, Harriet. So yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this remote hearing of the Licensing Subcommittee. My name is councillor Hutchison and I'll be chairing today's hearing. Before I proceed further, could I just remind everyone that today's meeting is being streamed live on the City Council's YouTube channel. Can I please ask the following members of the Subcommittee to introduce themselves? Start with councillor Lattie.
Councillor Pat Lattie, councillor for Geisley and Rawdon.
Thank you. And we've got councillor Richards.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Linda Richards, representing Wetherby Ward.
Thank you. I'd like to start the hearing today by confirming that this meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee meets the requirements of the council's constitution, even though members of the panel are in remote attendance. While items today will be fully discussed as is usual, remote attendance requires a few slight changes as to how we manage the debate. Therefore, can all attendees mute their microphone unless I invite them to speak? This avoids disruption from background noise. And also, can all participants please keep their cameras on during the hearing? All participants will be invited to introduce themselves at the start of the hearing to make it clear to public observers who will be involved in the proceedings. Could I now invite the officers to introduce themselves and then mute your microphone once you have finished? Start with Legal Services.
Hugh Chek, good afternoon. My name's Philippa Murray. I'm a solicitor in the Legal Services section of Leeds City Council. I'm supported by my fellow solicitor, Robert Brown, this afternoon. I'm here to advise the committee.
Thanks, Philippa. We've got Entertainment Licensing.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matthew. I'm part of Entertainment Licensing. And today I'm supported by Simon the Longfellow, Penicure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then we've got Governance Services.
Thanks, Chair. Hello, yes, Harriet Spake from Governance Services and clapped the Subcommittee this afternoon.
Thanks, Harriet. And then also, can I ask the applicants to introduce themselves? I believe that Mr Crossfield isn't present, but we do have Mr Freer on. If you can introduce yourself, please. You're on mute, Mr Freer.
Simon Freeran, I'm the director of My Barton and licence holder.
Great, thank you. And I think we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Two, please.
Thanks, Chair. Under Agenda Item Number Two, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. And right to number three, there are no items which require the exclusion of the pressing public today. And right to number four, there are no late items. And under Agenda Item Number Five, could I please ask members to declare any disclosed pecuniary interests, please?
None from myself.
None from me.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Six, which is the application to vary a premises licence held by My Bar Leeds Limited, 67 to 69 St Paul Street, Leeds, LS 12TE. Could please the legal adviser to the Subcommittee outline for the procedure for today's hearing, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is an application for the variation of a premises licence held by My Bar Leeds Limited, which is at 67 to 69 St Paul Street, Leeds. There's one written objection to the application, but that party doesn't attend in order to address this meeting. The usual procedure in this case is that the applicant addresses the committee, where there are no objectors to appear before the committee. The committee would then move to ask questions of the applicant. Following that, the applicant would have a chance to respond to anything that came from the questions asked of them by the committee and to sum up. In making its determination, the Subcommittee will consider what is appropriate and proportionate to promote the licensing objectives. Those objectives are the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, the prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The licensing regulations allow the Subcommittee to set a time limit on presentations, where more than one party, the same time limit would apply to each. The usual time limit is 15 minutes for each party. The applicant may split that, their time, and reserve some of the time to respond to anything that arises from questions or to sum up. Can I ask, Chair, if the Subcommittee does wish to impose a time limit? And if so, what the time limit would be?
Is the applicant happy? How would you like to designate your time? Would 10 minutes be okay or 15 minutes be okay to reserve?
Yeah, 10 minutes would be fine.
And Mr Freeran, would you want to reserve some of that 10 minutes? So that if there is anything that comes out of the questions asked, you can perhaps address that further or some of the committees?
Please.
Can you tell us how you'd want to split that time?
I don't need a few minutes. Can I just ask a question, just about? Would I be able to recite an email that I responded to the objection earlier today? I don't think it was received by yourselves.
I think that would come under late items, would it? Is that something you've received, Matthew?
No, that's not something that I'm aware of. When did you send the email to the objectors?
So we had one, I think it was on the 19th of April. That was the original email I received.
That will be a copy of the objection that the application attracted.
Okay, so this morning I also received a response again to my email from the objection, objector, and I then responded. So I'm happy to just recite my response, which I believe covered, you know, the areas of concern.
Oh, might I suggest then maybe if we allow 10 minutes for the application to start, and then maybe in that time, if you wish to cover that point, and then the questions, we can maybe have another five minutes for you to come back on any questions and sort of round up at the end?
So.
Are the members happy with that? Yep, okay.
Chair, could I perhaps check the email that you mentioned, Mr Freeran? Is this an email which has been sent out to the objectors this morning?
By a licensing. Yeah, so obviously the objector's name was redacted. So I've obviously responded to the licensing. It was actually Bridget Massey.
Yeah, so I think what you mean is that Bridget's acted as a third party between you and the objector, so that they can stay, so that they can remain anonymous. And you've tried to liaise in awfully, trying to reach an agreement and get them to withdraw their representation?
Yeah, I thought this was already made aware. Obviously, you've updated, so.
Yeah, Mr Freeran, can I check, are there points in that email which would not be covered in your address to the committee?
Yes, because there were more specific responses. It was, my understanding is that the main issue was noise pollution, given the response I received this morning. So I tried to, you know, to respond to those points.
Right. Will that be an area that you cover in your address to the committee, the noise pollution aspect?
I'll cover all areas. Anything that's asked, it's all under one umbrella.
Yeah, I think if it's covered in the address, and then if maybe at the end you feel that it hasn't been addressed, you've got the five minutes at the end as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is it worth, Matthew, trying to track down that email maybe before we go into deliberation or?
Yeah, I'm just checking with the case officer at the moment. I'm just going to see if there has been any liaisons that have taken place between Bridget and the objector, and whether the objector does remain outstanding. And if it does, then it's still left consideration to there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
If I can perhaps carry on with the procedural aspects of the committee. In relation to witnesses, parties may ask permission to call witnesses. Mr Freeran, can I check, do you have any witness that you want to call this afternoon?
No witnesses.
Thank you. Documents that have previously been submitted have been circulated to the Subcommittee before the meeting. Can I check that we are all working from a pack that is 44 pages long? Is that the case? Yeah. Thank you. It would be helpful when you're addressing the committee that if you refer to documents, you could identify the document carefully, the document that you're referring to. Additional documents can only be tabled with the consent of all of the parties. And I think we'll perhaps come back to the email if need be, if it is something that you want the Subcommittee to consider. And please note that your presentation is your only opportunity to address the Subcommittee. There's no further right to sum up your case, and you do need to make sure that you have said everything that you wish to say and have taken into account in your presentation. After the applicant has made their presentation and after all questions have been considered, the members will consider whether they have all the information they need to make a decision. Once this point is reached, members of the committee will go into a private session. If there are any additional questions that members have, they'll return to the meeting in order to ask those questions. They will then return to the private session to make the decision. Can I ask the applicant, please remain in the meeting until you are asked to leave? All the parties will be informed once the hearing has ended and will be informed of the decision within five working days of today. Can I check, are there any representations about the procedure the Subcommittee proposes to follow before we do start the hearing? Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Philippa. I guess over to you, Matthew, to present the case, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So just quickly picking up on that point raised before, I've been in touch with the case officer. They've confirmed that the objection to the application still stands, so it's left for consideration today. So moving on to the application. If this is in relation to an application to vary the premises licence for My Bar Leeds Limited, which is 67 to 69 St Paul Street, Leeds, LS 1. The application is made to extend the hours for the two licensable activities which the premises currently benefits from. These are the sale by retail of alcohol and recorded music, and the hours proposed for each activity are 11:30 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday to Sunday. A copy of the existing licence, providing the current operating schedule, is included in the agenda pack, Appendix A on page 11. And a copy of the variation application that provides the applicant's proposals can be found, Appendix B on page 19. In terms of the responsible authorities, the application has attracted representation from West Yorkshire Police only, who have suggested additional measures, sorry, in order to promote the crime prevention objective. The applicant has agreed to incorporate those measures into the operating schedule, and a copy of the representation and the agreement can be seen on page 37 at Appendix D. That leaves the only representation that remains outstanding, which has been submitted on behalf of a local resident and focuses mainly on concerns related to noise nuisance and antisocial behaviour. The objector in this instance has requested to remain anonymous throughout the full application process, and a sanitised version of the objection can be found at Appendix E on page 41. Finally, and to assist members with the existing pattern of licensed premises in the surrounding area, a list of those premises, including the licensable activities and hours, is available on page 43 at Appendix F. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Matthew. Mr Freeran, can I invite you now, please, to present your case for the 10 minutes that you have?
Okay, so I wasn't actually prepared to present a case. I thought I was going to answer questions generally. All I can say is that we've looked at the concerns of the objection, and I don't believe anything that, well, you know, that we would do would affect the neighbourhood or the area in any way. I don't agree that it's a residential area. It's essentially in the centre of town. There's a bar on the street that, you know, assuming opens later. I know there's pubs around the corner that open later and sell alcohol later than we're proposing. There's a Tesco Express on the same street that sells alcohol up until 11 o'clock. Also, there's been talk of the local park, which is opposite from our bars, probably about 300 yards, where people have been said to drink. That was one of the concerns of the objector. And we believe that people do that anyway and have done. I've worked in that area, in the building next door, the building round the corner, West One. I worked for Tavagating Showrungs for three years. And I'm familiar with the area. I know the cafes I used to go for lunch there. I'm familiar with the wine bar that was there earlier, or previously, should I say. I don't think anything that we're proposing is excessive in any sense. I think the police have expressed that as well. And I'm going to be there for day-to-day operations. So obviously, the responsibility does lie with me. And I've made contact with neighbours and working professionals in the area already. Who all, you know, love the idea. It's convenient on the doorstep. And I am to, you know, to keep things as they are, not interfere or cause any kind of public nuisance or anything like that. We just want to invite working professionals, families, visitors to the city centre, to somewhere, you know, they can dine. And it's not the hospital as in the centre of town. It's, you know, it's just on the edge. And, you know, we encourage people to come and dine. There's a bar there, obviously. And it's, I don't think it's excessive at all. So we were just proposing to sell alcohol, so 11, close at 11:30, and as opposed to closing at 8:30, which is a bit, I think, is a bit ridiculous for a bar. I think that's all I can really say at this moment. I'll return to any questions.
Great, thanks, Mr Freeran. Do we have any questions from members?
Councillor Richards? Yes, please, if I may, the first one. You were saying about, sorry, good afternoon, Lattie, your presentation about what you want to do and why. The hours that you've put for the hours of alcohol sale, there seems to be a difference between that which you've put on the explanation on your application and that which is actually within the application itself. So in other words, at one point it says 11:30 and at the other one it says 12.
Definitely not 12. It's 11:30, closed by 11.
Right, because, yeah, because the hours on, so it's 11:30 from the opening hours, which, you know, it should be at the same time as your opening hours, I assume, which is what you've put there. So you're saying 11:30 to 11:30, essentially, yeah?
For the sale of alcohol?
Yes.
Until 11 o'clock. It should be 11 o'clock. I don't know what's happened there.
Right, so it's.
It's closed, closed, so it's 11 o'clock, 11 PM alcohol licence and then 11:30 close.
I can clarify that, councillor Richards. It's a case of, from the last sale of alcohol up to the closing time of the premises, there's a 30-minute window to allow people to drink up. So from the final orders at 11, so it's just that 30 extra minutes to allow people to drink up and dispense.
No, it's just the actual starting time, to be perfectly honest. Because it, on one part of the application, it actually says 11:30.
Sorry, it should be 12. My mistake.
Okay, so it should be 12 o'clock for the actual start of the alcohol sale. Yeah, I take point, Matthew, about the drinking up time, as we oldies used to call it. But, yeah, the actual start time is 12 o'clock there. Okay, right. Anybody else want another question for a minute?
Do you have any more, councillor Richards?
Well, the other one was about the recorded music. There was a kind of a similar sort of issue going on there, really. I believe that there is, I mean, that pertains in a way to the issue of the nuisance and the 11:30 finish time there for that. Is that something which you would feel you would wish to adhere to rather than say 11 o'clock with?
I'm not, sorry to interrupt you. I'm not sure what's happening there, but it should mirror the sale of alcohol times. So from 12 till 11 PM.
Right, so it is, again, it's from 12 to 11, so it should mirror.
It should mirror the sale of alcohol times, with the wind down for the last 30 minutes.
Yeah, that makes sense, definitely, yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Now, no further questions at the moment. Thank you.
Great, thanks, councillor Richards. Councillor Lattie?
I'd just like to ask, it appears that there are, there have been offices made into residential, you know, residential flats or bedsits or whatever in the area. And that's one of the, one of the, yeah.
Yes, directly opposite, we have Pizza Express that opened to the exact same time and sold the alcohol up to the same time. So that was directly opposite our building, literally 30 yards. That's been there for some years. There's another bar at the top of the street, which is called Dirty Martini. They open a lot later than us. There's shops, there's cafes, there's pubs. But granted, you know, there is residents there, and I do know, and I've spoken to a lot of residents, but there is a lot of businesses as well and have been there for years.
So there doesn't appear to be any problem then with residents in the area?
Not from my understanding. The shop window that we opened, where we were allowed to open last year, it was mainly residents that was coming, you know, obviously, you know, there's a few working professionals, businesses surrounding us, but mainly residents.
Right.
But that was only, I think, because, you know, we're a new bar. We're still trying to understand our market. But that becomes, we need to be open to do that. We were only, we only managed to open for three weeks.
Right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you have any further questions, councillor Lattie?
No, that's, I wanted to just.
Okay, Mr Freeran, if I may, can you kind of explain to me your normal sort of routine, operating routine from sort of when you open at 12 o'clock and then expect to finish at 11 o'clock? Sort of a normal day-to-day sort of maybe routine, clientele, demographic, that kind of thing?
Right, so we would initially aim to get the lunch marketing. So we are looking at offering a brunch, but that would be Saturday, mainly Saturday and Sundays. There will be promotions that we do between 12 and 6 o'clock mainly. But if, from an operating standpoint, we would open at 12 o'clock, obviously have, with a rush for lunch. Hopefully, there is a rush for two hours. Then we might close for an hour or two. This is something that we're looking to put into practice. We've not been able to do that. We was, you know, like I said, we're only open for three weeks. So there would probably be an hour or two maybe in the afternoon where we might close and then reopen. Or, you know, we just have to play as it goes, as it goes really. But there may be, you know, the promotion I've been doing on a Friday, like a happy hour or something like that, but that would be around about tea time, so probably 4 till 6, 6 PM.
What about with regards to going into the evening? So sort of a Thursday, Friday, Saturday evening up to 11 o'clock. What kind of expectations are you having with regards to what type of clientele and what you hope to be achieving from the establishment?
So given the feedback that we've had, I would say it's predominantly bookings that will be taken online by our website. And obviously with a good marketing campaign behind that. So to maximise our profit, we look at someone who's going to come in, either, you know, a couple or a family. They're going to sit, they're going to have food, they're going to have drink as well. And obviously, you get people, you know, natural footballer, footballer, walk past and calling. But we want to target groups of people, you know, and families really. And the working professionals from around the area, the solicitors, accountants, et cetera.
And I say, in the documentation, there was mention of 30 covers. If people have finished eating and they wish to stay on the rest of the evening drinking alcohol, is that something that you're sort of encouraging or is it more case-based around the food side of things?
We're not encouraging that. Oh, we can accommodate it because the seating around the bar, the stools all on the bar. It's not a massive bar in itself, but we can accommodate it. We can hold 32 covers at the max. And then there's a good seating, and that's away from the actual bar area. So that would be another room, which is right next to the bar. But we could accommodate people to, you know, obviously, if people want to use the bar, we wouldn't stop them. But we're not encouraging that. We just assume that people, if they're leaving the table, they're more likely going to leave the premises.
Okay, and then on the recorded music side of things, what is, is it kind of background music, elevator music, or is it sort of music for sort of loud ambience or?
So predominantly background music. I explained this in the email. I addressed this earlier today, which you'll probably hear later. So we want to, you know, we want people to be able to converse, have, you know, a conversation with the, we're looking, obviously, at groups of people. So if the music is the forefront, it defeats the object. It is definitely going to be more of a background, a background environment, you know, ambience or whatever. And like I said, we've only got sponsor speakers. We've not got any big sound system with, you know, huge amplifiers. It's probably, it's going to be run off a mobile phone of, you know, and just a background playlist that doesn't interfere or impede, really, with people when they're trying to, you know, have conversations. We look at the clientele that we've got. They don't want loud music. They don't, they want to come, most of them want to come somewhere after work and have some food and have a chat and just wind down. They're not looking to be having their hands in the air and running around tables or anything like that.
Okay, and then I think I've just, one final question is, anything, any activities taking place outdoors, like a street cafe licence or any outside music or anything like that?
Not going to lie, I'd love to, but we don't have the space. There's a bollard in the middle of the road between us and ourselves and Pizza Express. So to divert traffic round there, it'd be more worthwhile blocking the road off than trying to call any office, any kind of bollards. I think there's a two-metre rule if you're having an outside dining. And we couldn't accommodate, it wouldn't be safe for the public to walk around. It would be, you know, a public health hazard if we were to do that, so.
Okay, great. I think that's all the questions I have. If any of the members have any other questions they want to pose at the moment?
Can I just have another bag of this one? And obviously, this is a change from your original licence application, though, which went to 8 o'clock. So presumably, your perception of your clientele or potential clientele has slightly changed. Has that slightly changed because of the last year, one might say? Or is that sort of just a general recognition that possibly you didn't fully reflect the nature of the clientele in the area?
It's a business decision, really. If we think about it, the bar, the previous bar, they sold wine, but they just had nibbles at the bar. We've incorporated a kitchen. So a lot of people as well are going to, you don't. So a lot of people as well are going to, you don't want to be kicking people out half past eight. You know, some people might not get out of work till seven o'clock. And then meet up with their friends, then have to have a drink beforehand normally, potentially, and then sit down and have a meal. And we were actually kicking people out and it was just, it's, it's, sorry, but it's quite ridiculous. Obviously, given Covid has happened as well, our business has suffered from the off because all our forecasting has gone out the window. And, you know, right now, we just, we don't know what's around the corner. So, you know, we need to, we need to survive and this is part of it as well. But that's why I think it's a reasonable, we're not asking too much. I think it's very reasonable. It's like meeting in the middle, we're closing when bars are open, open in town. Yeah.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question councillor?
Yeah, it does, does.
You can have another bite if you want.
Okay, if we have no further questions, if you'd maybe sort of have five minutes to sort of sum up before we go into deliberation? Mr Freer?
Oh, myself, sorry.
Yes.
Right, so my bar is a great bar. It does appeal to everyone, but I've already pointed out it's, it's aimed mainly at the working professionals around the area, which I know a lot of, I've worked, like I said, in the corner. I'm expecting all the staff there to come, support us. There's loads of, like I said, we're right, we're a good part around the edge of the town, so it's not too busy. But we can appeal to the residents as well and make them feel comfortable. And anything that we do, we'll always have the neighbours and the residents, everybody in mind. We just want to offer good dining and obviously a good drink to go with it. With, you know, and it's not based around music, it's more of a nice setting, nice environment where everybody feels welcome. It's not, it's not going to impede on anybody, like I said, we, in the points in the email I mentioned, we'd, even down to the speakers that we directed, they're small enough anyway. But away from the door, the door will be closed a majority of the time, so there'll be hardly any noise pollution. There's signage that's going to be in the bar to, to to make customers aware, you know, of the public and to keep the noise and respect, respect our neighbours basically. Everything that we can possibly do to encourage, any staff, mean staff training as well to make, you know, make them aware of how, you know, customers respect that we do have neighbours. I'm trying to, for all, I'm trying to think of my email, I said, I don't want to repeat everything I've said, but my email probably explains it a lot better than I'm doing now. But we've looked at, we've looked at every, every point and I believe that, you know, it wouldn't affect the area any more so than the business that are already open around there.
Great, thanks, Mr Freo. And I think you have kind of covered what I think we need to take away. So unless members have any other questions? No? Okay, on that basis, the subcommittee will now move to a private session to deliberate on the application. Could I ask that all parties, including the applicant and the representatives and the licensing officer remain available should the subcommittee have any additional questions? If there are any additional questions, you'll be invited back into the meeting by the clerk. Over to you Harriet.
Thanks Chair. Yes, as she said, when I'm moving into private session, Auntie, could you move us into the breakout rooms please? Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, is everybody here?
I think so.
Yeah. Yep, there's Philip, Philip, I, yep. Yep, everybody here. Mister Freyr, just during the deliberation, um we just want to uh. Sort of clarify and clear up just one slight matter, which is regarding the times. And so on the, on page twenty of the licence application. It mentions in just one line the alcohol hours every day from twelve until eleven. Whereas on the actual application boxes, where you put on for each day, the time from and time to. Um the alcohol, I'm just trying to find it now, the the supply of alcohol. Um is mentioned there from eleven thirty to eleven o'clock. Um and if we were sort of minded to 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 grant the application. Um that um as applied for would be from eleven thirty to eleven o'clock. Is there any issues with that?
No issues at all, even though we obviously we'd still, it wouldn't affect what we're doing, but. So if you were to grant it, I would, you know, absolutely.
So essentially, I guess you you would, you would be getting what has been applied for in section J, which is eleven thirty till eleven o'clock. And then under the section F, which is the recorded music. You have from eleven thirty to eleven thirty, except on Sundays. Um again, if we were minded to grant as applied for. We would like to see, well, would you have any objection to that being eleven o'clock in line with the alcohol? So that alcohol and music would both stop at eleven o'clock?
First of all, my apologies if I don't know what's happened there. It's probably I've sent from, of the form and maybe it was incorrect, but I've got no objections with that at all.
Right, okay, so, okay. So just for clarity then, for uh recording and for everybody present. What we are saying is that you have no object, well, you you would have no problem if. We were minded to grant the application for recorded music and for the supply of alcohol from eleven thirty A M. Every day until eleven P M every day. Except Sunday, where you have ten thirty for the music. Guys getting an acknowledgement that that's clear from everybody, licensing, legal. Everybody's happy with that. Members, are we happy with that?
Happy with that.
Great stuff. Mister Freyr, are you comfortable with that?
Comfortable, yeah.
Great stuff. Okay. On that basis then, um. Can I thank everybody for attending today? Um it concludes our business for today and that everybody will be informed of the decision. Within five working days. Uh thanks very much for attending, Mister Freyr, and have a pleasant day.
Have a, have a great day, sir.